All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order today. I didn't expect to be in the chair's seat, but Chair Deena Hayes is with us on the phone. She had another conflict that emerged today, and so they're working me right up until the last day. Deborah, would you be willing to do the pledge? All right, thank you. We'll start a meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if you would remain standing for just a minute. Thank you, please be seated. So this called session is for consideration of a challenge to the educational resource source that's titled "Life is Funny." Appreciate counsel being here today and our board clerk, as I have not chaired one of these sessions. As I understand it, there's a presenter who has filed the appeal, and we will hear from Mr. Jim Morris. He has an allotted time of 10 minutes to present, and then we can have discussion and question by members of the board, after which we can vote on the appeal.
And just to clarify, after Mr. Morris presents, I believe the district will present for 10 minutes as well. And after that, I'll go over the legal standard with you all.
Thank you very, very much. So, Mr. Morris, you can come to the podium and make your remarks. Thank you.
I'll only be able to give my remarks and stick around for a few, maybe 10, 15. I'll stick around as long as I can. I am on my lunch break, so being that this wasn't in the evening, it's the only option I had. But fortunately, it worked out. Okay. Hi, my name is Jim Morris. I'm at 7707 Cedar Chase Drive. I'm here to appeal on removing "Life is Funny" by E.R. Frank at Northern Guilford High School. I need to read the excerpt from the book so we can fully understand why I'm making this request. So here it goes. "I apologize if it offends anyone or makes them uncomfortable." And I go, feel this, and put her hand on my jeans over my hard dick. She laughs and goes, well, damn, that's nothing new. And I look at her deep eyes and her big old feet, and then we're kissing, watery tongues, springy lips, tugging, pulling, and we lie down, and she peels off my shirt, and I unbutton her short, pretty mini, and soon we're all skin to skin, warm, sexy, mouth and hands, brushing, stroking over tits and ass and stomach, lost, mush brain, heat, curves, sucking, rocking, slipping, swollen, wet, shiny pussy, pushing, pulsing, breathing, moaning, straining thick dick, hat smells like salt balloons, sticky, rolling over achy stiff thing, shy sly fingers, oh, Lord, its tip kissing her melting slit, slides, glides in, deep swallowed suck, rocking, aching, I don't have a rucking, God, Allah, Buddha, Kisha, thank you." That was on page 178. Sorry, I didn't give you the page number. But that's on page 178 of the book, if you want to look it up. That's my main concern and problem with this book. And I want us to start by, just because this book was selected by professionals in the education industry to fit a criteria doesn't make it right. All across the country, we've seen and heard of graphic sexual situations in educational books that parents are up in arms about. Parents have been stopped in meetings from reading books because of these vulgar and graphic depictions. In fact, Board Member Deena Hayes mentioned at one book challenge that because of the traditional conservative way she was raised, she would have never been able to read out loud the excerpts that were read from salvage to bones. Really? So you're saying it's okay for our children to access these books even though it wasn't for you? And I know you're not here, but I hope you can hear me. Next, let's address whether this is pornographic and obscene material, and keep in mind, the law states it doesn't matter what context the obscene material is in. I have a question, and I know you can't answer me here, but you can answer in your head. Would you watch this, what I just described, as a movie with your 14-year-old or read it out loud to them? Just ask yourself that. Imagine sitting down with your kid, seeing this on live video or reading it to them and saying, hell, this is education. And Superintendent Oakley, would faith leaders that met with you in your Better Together community conversation about how best to move our community forward approve of this material? I don't think so. But yet, the board continues to force these materials into the classrooms and media centers. I understand we have the right to opt out our kids, and I'll address that in a minute. Now let's address kids' constitutional rights to obtain these materials. The kids don't have constitutional rights to obtain these materials, not over their parents' decisions. And that I thought I put it on, excuse me, thought I put it on Do Not Disturb. And that may sound harsh, but kids will make all kinds of decisions either because they think they know better, they want to try it because it's taboo, or they're rebelling, which is normal for kids their age. You may be shocked, but I told my 18-year-old, it's her decision whether she reads salvage to bones in her English AP Lit class. I also told her I hoped she would pick something else, but as an adult, it's her choice. But high school is not only 18-year-olds. This excerpt is not on masturbation, and it's offensive on many levels as it shows no respect for women, the reader, parents, and religions, Christian, Muslim, and Buddhist. I'm sure that fellow Christians, Muslims, and Buddhists would be outraged if they knew that their God's name was used in a description of a sexual hookup between two teenagers. I would say that the sexualization of our youth has hurt them, and the proof is in the drugs, depression, suicides, pregnancies, violence, and criminal behavior that are more and more prevalent and our kids are involved in. I also want to respond to a study that was brought up in the last appeal. According to a study by Ms. Robinson and others, exposing children to overly graphic sexual content makes them more confident and less likely to be at risk for abuse or early sexual activity that could lead to other problems, and not exposing them puts them at risk for all of these problems. But let's look at some basic facts. Sweden, like many Nordic countries, is more open about sex with their youth, and their median age for teenage sex is 15 years. You know what the United States is? 17 years. We also know that early sexual activity leads to risky and dangerous behavior that can have disastrous results. So how is being innocent dangerous, which we are told again and again in that study? I was innocent, and I'm okay. Ms. Hayes, from your statements earlier about your conservative upbringing, you were innocent, and you're okay? Innocence is okay. And children can only handle what they're mature enough to. Pushing them beyond that traumatizes them, and just because you don't expose them to smut doesn't mean they're naive. My daughters are well aware of the facts of what's going on around in the world, and they know how to protect themselves. So if exposing, excuse me, younger age, children younger age to graphic sex is supposed to keep them from trying sex at an early age, then why is that not the case in Sweden, where the median age is 15 years old, and they are more open about it? And so is Iceland and Finland. And no, I don't have the right to control what other kids view, but if following guidance from a flawed study that doesn't hold water, breaking the law, and upsetting parents so much so that they are pulling their kids out, which will weaken the schools, then why are they putting these books in a library and curriculum when they could use books that delivered the same message without being so graphic? I'm not here to argue, fight, start a lawsuit, or ban books. I'm here to help come to an agreement on protecting minors, protecting parents' rights, and working with the school on this situation. As you know, there's a statute stating schools cannot promote sex that depicts or describes anything obscene. Part of that definition is anything describing patently offensive sexual conduct, and see General Statute 14-190.1. Schools are supposed to be encouraging students to respect the law, not break it like the schools are. While you can argue a book's artistic or educational value, if part of that book becomes graphic and has offensive sexual conduct, it has to be included in the understanding of this statute. Stories can be told and understood without going into graphic detail. And while kids can get pornography outside of school, schools are not supposed to promote pornography, just like they're not supposed to promote drug use. Parents have rights on what their children have access to in school, and those rights have to be respected, especially in regards to minors. The schools are opening themselves up to lawsuits, withdrawal of students, which many of my neighbors have done, and unhappy, angry parents. If they continue down this road, they will only continue to make parents angry and risk liability. This is not going away, and the school district is going to have to address it one way or another. Let's see if a compromise can be reached that makes parents, schools, and students happy. I suggest an opt-in list for all questionable materials in the media center. These books will be kept in a separate area where a student would have to be in on an opt-in list to access. The school will keep a list of these items on hand, and parents would have to sign an opt-in form at the beginning of the year for their minor children to access these materials. We're talking about minors here, not adults, and parents will do what they can to protect those minor children if they feel they're being harmed regardless of how someone else sees it. I feel like this solution protects minors, protects parents' rights, and continues to let the school have these materials if they want. It wouldn't be hard to accomplish and would solve the issue. That is why I prefer this over taking the book out, but taking the book out was my only option. I had no other option, but I prefer an opt-in list. I would love to get together at Dr. Oakley's Better Together discussions and work something out, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll also now hear from a representative from the district about the resource.
Good afternoon, Dr. Oakley and members of the Board of Education. I'm Natalie Strange, Director of Library and Media Services for Guilford County Schools. Today I'm looking at the appeal to the DRC decision, that District Review Committee decision, to keep this book available in school and classroom libraries. I'm going to review the purpose of our school libraries, the process of how we decide what goes into a library, and the specific selection for "Life is Funny." In our schools, we hope to provide books that serve as mirrors for our students to be able to see themselves, windows for readers to be able to learn about others, and doors to enter a world of imagination dreaming of possibilities. School library media coordinators follow Policy 3200 to guide decisions on which resources we add to those collections. We want to make sure our collections are aligned to the curriculum and also supporting leisure reading. Our libraries contain books that represent all aspects of the human experience. We hope to help our students understand better current world issues, increase awareness about social practices, and promote unity and empathy. To be a school library media coordinator in North Carolina, you have a master's degree from an accredited university in library information science. There, our librarians learn to analyze school data and use unbiased selection tools to create collections that are unique to their school environment. The process of curation is constant, with librarians analyzing what's on their shelves to determine if it aligns with the current curriculum and interests of the school community. Each of our collections should be unique and representative of that school. ALA's statement of access to resources reminds us about not making emotional decisions, but basing our decisions on what's selected by the word of experts and evaluation based Nationwide research suggests that reading, writing, and graduation rates improve where schools employ certified school library media coordinators. Initial research here in GCS supports that schools with higher circulation rates have a positive relationship with their EOC and EOG test scores. Every year, our school library media coordinators craft a collection development plan in collaboration with their school's media technology advisory committee. That school committee consists of administrators, teachers, parents, and at middle and high school can have student representatives as well, as outlined in Policy 3200. This is the process by which they determine what books they should add to their collection and evaluate their current collections. They start with a general inventory of what's in their school, and then they analyze their student population. This data you would see on the GCS data dashboard. Our school libraries should represent the diversity of our student populations. Digging into what their local school looks like and what makes them unique, this is polled from the collection development plan from Northern High School. They look at specific activities that should be reflected within their collection. They then determine what special areas they want to use for focus, in this case, increasing the volume of self-selected independent reading. Media coordinators look at their existing collections to see how they align with that school data and goals. Digging into the Northern High School's collection development plan, you can see that 8% of those general fiction titles were considered African-American and 2% considered Hispanic or Latinx. We want to make sure that we're representing the students at the school, and so evaluating what's on the shelves now is an important part of that. Annie Harris, media coordinator at Northern High School, also applies Bond's Use Factor to analyze her collection for use. In this case, a perfect balance of circulation percentage, the percentage of holdings, would result in a 1. Higher numbers in that last column under Use Factor indicate areas where circulation is higher than the representation in the collection. The top circulating areas are highlighted in purple to indicate areas of the collection that need growth, so these are areas where she'd want to purchase more books. "Life is Funny" is in one of the top five circulating genres. The specific selection of "Life is Funny." I was one of the two school librarians who opened Northern High School. As such, I would have been part of the team that helped select the books for that opening day collection, of which this book was one. These are the areas for Policy 3200 that we referred to, specific to the selection of leisure reading materials to support our students. Looking at reviews, these are the unbiased selection tools that have positive recommendations for "Life is Funny." Specifically, from School Library Journal, its reviews suggest the title for grades nine and up, describing the book as "a coming-of-age story featuring a multicultural cast of characters whose lives intersect over seven years. While confronting issues with social and societal problems, the characters remain hopeful as they reach out to each other to overcome the trials of their lives. The characters and the voices are distinct, each character written as if by a teen themselves." Author E.R. Frank drew on her experience as a clinical social worker to develop the unique voice for each character. Gingerbread and Kisha find love although Gingerbread suffers with attention issues. His family is supportive, and his teachers help him to find success in schools. His scenes are written with a clear diction and the voice of a neurodiverse teen. Do students have the right to access and read this material? In GCS, we have a clear selection policy outlined in Board Policy 3200, identifying the factors around resource selection, retention, and allowing for the challenge process. Parent Tools for Selection: I encourage family conversations about reading. Talk to your students about what they're reading and help to guide their choices. Share your preferences with your school library media coordinator, and they will help you to find books that you and your students can enjoy that are within your criteria. You can search the online catalog from home. Destiny Discover is our online public access catalog. It's open to search as a visitor. When students log in, they'll see curated content based on their grade levels. Visitors may see different titles. Reviews are often included in what you can find online if you want to go on and research books with your student. At the Northern High Library, the library is open from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30. Parents can come in as a visitor to preview books with a school librarian. They can check out books to preview them on their own time, or they can meet with a school librarian to set up parameters for his or her student's population or interests for their circulation. "Life is Funny" is one of many options available for schools, for students at Northern to choose from. They have over 12,000 physical books in their school library, and additional 12,000 eBooks, audiobooks, and interactive books. That's a lot of options for our students and our families to choose from. I'm proud to be part of a district with a strong policy, allowing for choice and reconsideration of materials through public meetings, through open discussion of books and ideas. We all become stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, you'll review the legal precedent or parameters?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so as you think about this book, just to remind you of the legal standard here, the board has discretion to determine the merits of the challenge and whether to retain or remove the book. However, that discretion may not be exercised in a narrowly political or partisan manner. So the reasons for removal must be constitutional. Some reasons that the board may remove the book are that the book is A) educationally unsuitable, B) pervasively vulgar, or C) inappropriate for the age, maturity, or grade level of the students. However, the board may not remove the books if the reason for doing so is that it disagrees with the ideas or in an effort to suppress ideas. So that's the general framework. The reasons for removing the book are really important as you go through this discussion.
Thank you. I do want to note, this is not in required curriculum as the last book that we reviewed. It's in the library. I asked, it's been checked out three times since 2013, once in 2013, once in 2016, and once in 2022, it's not been returned. So I have some curiosities about why we're here. Who decided? Did a child really bring the book home? Was it on a nationally circulated list that someone decided to make an issue of, you know, in the broader context in which we are here? But we're here, but I thought it was important to note, one, because we had a session recently that had it in curriculum, and two, the current record of use of the book over the last several years. Lynda, you had your hand up, and then Diane, and then Deborah.
There again, I read the book. I read the-
Did you check it out and not return it?
Sure, but I did read it from cover to cover, and it really, the sexual content ends up getting away. But even before the sexual content, I would have concerns with a 14-year-old reading about suicide, about cutting themselves, about a lot of the topics in here without me knowing about it, okay? So, and the problem with this book, "Life is Funny," there is not one thing on here that would tell you that this may be a book with some challenging topics in it, that this may be a book with explicit sex in it. So I have a problem with that, all right? Because my 14-year-old, because like this gentleman said, not everybody's 18, all right? 14-year-olds can be very immature, and instead of making them, it could make them curious about what all this is talking about, okay? Because there again, we are assuming that all children are at this level of maturity and wisdom and everything, and I can assure you, not all children are as aware of sexual exploits and all these things at 14. I mean, there are some, and there are some not. So my real problem, the other thing with this book, there was never a plot situation where I could follow the plot. It jumped around so much, I'm like, okay, where am I at now? Who am I talking about? It kind of was like a pair of, a chapter on each individual, and then as the story goes on, somehow there's a minor connection between them. So yes, it's in high school. I was glad to at least know that. But still, when I think of my 14-year-old son or daughter getting this and starting to read this without my knowledge of reading it, and without my knowledge of the content in it, I would be concerned, because this is not something they need to read without having some discussion and an adult to discuss it with them. But I will have no clue that they've read this. I will have no clue that it talks about cutting you. I have no clue that it talks about suicide. I have no clue the multitude of not positive situations. These do happen. They do happen. We all know these things happen. However, is this what I, how I want my child to deal with it? Or would they even deal with it? Would they bring it to me? Would they be ashamed to bring this to me? Would they be open to bringing this to me? And so now they've read a book with a lot of topics that are disturbing, okay? And I don't have a clue that they've read it, nor do, when they start it, do they really have a clue what they're getting into? Because this book shows, I've read this. There is nothing on here that identifies what's in this book. So there's my problem. I do believe that we need to have, just if we're going to this level of book, then the book needs to say graphic sex topics that are questionable, that this may not be appropriate for a 14-year-old. I mean, if you got to do PG 13, and you have to have permission to watch a movie at a certain age- at a certain age, then this is crossing the line for me. And that's where I'm at. Do I want to ban the book? No. Do I want to know, my child to know what they're like, hey, this is not such a great, this has got a lot of deep stuff in it. It has, it has explicit sex in it, and I want them to bring this home to me and let me know? Or somehow I want to have some notification that my child's reading a book that may never have known about cutting? Not all children know that that goes on. Some children do, some don't. So that's not how I want them to find it out. So that's my take on it. I think if we're going to have this level of content in our libraries, there should be some identification associated with the book to identify that that's in there.
Diane?
I have a couple of questions.
District staff?
Yeah, for the lady that was up here.
Ms. Strange?
Okay. Can you, in your professional opinion, give what the basic reason is for having media centers?
The basic reason for having media centers?
Yes.
Right, so media centers provide a place to support literacy across the school. So not only are we collaborating with those classroom areas, their core subjects, and supporting that, but we're also supporting students' leisure reading, self-selected leisure reading. So we're there to support that, to have full collections that show our students themselves on the shelves, as well as helping them to learn about others and what's going on in the world.
Okay, my next question is, what do educators believe is the key reason to encourage children to read? Either you can answer, or you can answer.
Well, I mean, any exposure, right, to literacy. Literacy is part of how you participate in the world. And so it's, it's a focus of the board, it's a focus of, of, you know, how we've invested resources, because we want to graduate literate citizens.
Okay. All right, well, you know, first of all, you know, if we're trying to close Pandora's Box, Pandora's Box was open a long time ago. Wait, I have one more question for you. Sorry, let me do that, so you can sit down. This is, I don't see a page number.
Okay.
It's this page?
The Bond Use Factor.
Okay. Can you give a little bit more description of what romantic fiction is?
And that's going to vary by school. So some schools are genrefied and some schools aren't, just like you would walk into a Barnes &amp; Noble and you would find the different genres. So romantic fiction is going to be a fiction that's going to revolve around relationships.
Okay. Could you give me a description of what horror fiction is?
Horror fiction, when it comes to our school libraries, is going to usually involve a setting or theme that's going to be set in something that we would consider to be maybe Gothic or be considered scary. A lot of the genre notifications are things you find in those reviews, where it will recommend different genres for books. Scary books may also involve supernatural occurrences.
So would Harry Potter be a horror?
That would be probably a fantasy when we look at those genres. Usually magic is going to put you in a fantasy genre.
Okay, Black Lives Literature.
And this, the title of this particular area has changed a few times at Northern High School, depending on what were the interests of the students lay. The Black Lives Literature is going to focus on African-American stories.
Okay, those stories include slavery?
They might. These are going to be the fiction genre, so it could be books that are fictionalized histories that would include slavery.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, as I was saying, Pandora's Box has already been opened a long time ago. It started whenever, as far as I'm concerned, when we have more than three channels on TV. And so for some of you who are as old as I am, you know, we used to just have three channels. Now you've got 3,000, which means that, you know, people can access, people meaning children, can access almost anything that they want to know, from how to cook a burger to how to do whatever. And sometimes I think we have seen that some of the behaviors of children have been encouraged by what they've seen in the various mediums, like TikTok, like holding your breath until you pass out, or, you know, what other, other kind of foolishness. So we can't hide the ills of life from our children. Banning books, books that are banned are a lot of times books that teach important moments of history. The stories of books that have been banned inspire us and are realistic and truthful. Now, we may not like realistic, but everybody sitting in this room has lived life to the point where you are now. And everything in your life has not necessarily been pretty. You've had perhaps ugly things happen, you've had sad things happen, you've had great happy things happen. So we can't hide life. And to have, and we talk about it. So when you've had experiences, you've, you've talked about those experiences with somebody. I think that, as I said last week, to box our kids in and not allow them to be curious enough to read something and ask about it. I think that if your daughters see something, you expect, and they probably do, come and say, Daddy, what is that? What is that about? And you decide at what level you want them to understand what they're curious about. To books that are banned, not all books have bad language in them. But I think we're afraid of thinking. And right now, we need people to think. And we need them to think outside of the box, whether it's about how we teach children going forward, about how we solve the various ills in the world. Folks have got to go there in order to get there. Our children are these amazing creatures that are trying to learn because we've told them. Because if we didn't want children to learn, we would keep them at home and keep them in their rooms and never let them see TV, radio, or anything. But even if you did that, your child would look out the window and see life and ask you, why are the birds singing? Or, so you're not going to be able to contain them. So the best thing to do is to actively act with them. Now, libraries, whether it's in our system or public libraries, they were put here to give everyday people, people can't afford to buy expensive books, an opportunity to have books, to be able to have them, bring them back. So whoever took the book out of Northern's library, you need to bring it back. Because we, you know, that's what we do, we share through this public system that we've created and invested in ever since the 1870s, ever since we started, you know, creating books for people to be able to share and have access to books. And I think the key word here is, the children have access to the books in the media center. That doesn't mean that that child has to check that book out. And I think there's a media specialist at each center, so if a kid picks up a book and is curious about it and wants to know, is this something I, you think I should read? They can get that advice from the media specialist, is that correct?
Yes, they haven't read every book that's in the library, but they have access to the description, Lexile, all the things that come with, you know, a description or a summary of the book within the system that they use.
Okay, well, let me ask this last question. The eBooks, do the kids just go straight to the eBooks on their own? Or do they have to go through media specialist, somebody to be able to get to those books?
They have login access through their student ID. It was part of the One Card rollout. It's part of, you know, when you learn how to do things at the beginning of the year, whether it's physically check out a book or use the eBook shelf. It's, I mean, we kind of orient them to that at the beginning of the school year.
So they do have access pretty freely to whatever the eBook book list is?
Right, just like the library.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Deborah?
Mr. Morse, if I may. Page 178 in this book. Did you read the book, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I bought a copy.
Okay. No, 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 no worries. And the reason I ask is because the, and I don't know if you bought this one particularly or not. But this, and I noticed also with Salvage the Bones, there were several references made, made to page 13. The material that you read is nowhere near 178 in my copy, so it just made me wonder if the book was, if the book was read, because I read it cover to cover. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, typo, happens.
Well, like, maybe the, this is big, it's, this is big with a copy, he has maybe smaller print.
Uh, no, but I mean, we're talking. Gotcha. Okay. So they just, it just piqued my interest, that's all. Because this book is about lived experience. And there's actually a different section that I would like to read for you real quick. "We Don't Ride," oh, this is page 220, by the way. "We Don't Ride: I'm Too Scared." "So we leave the horses and walk instead. He shows me what's got to be the entire state of Pennsylvania. We walk for hours and hours. I've never walked so much in my life. I've never been on the inside of so much grass and trees and fields and air and filled with silky star-shaped seeds swimming by. I never stepped in cow shit or horse shit. I never knew their piles were so big, even though if you think on it for two seconds, you'd know they'd have to be. I never saw tomatoes and cucumbers and corn and basil and leaves growing up out of the ground or had round thorn balls that got stuck in my socks either. I never knew pigs could be as tame as dogs, even though I read Charlotte's Web when I was small, and salutations was one of the first words me and my mother and Nick found in her dictionary. I never knew that the horses smelled like dirt and church lady sweat and hay mixed in, or that their noses were softer than a baby's butt. I never knew you can think you understand what it means to live in this world, what it smells like and looks like and feels like on your skin and in your heart. And then, in less time than it takes to get your hair done, you can look up at a whole different sky and realize that all this time, you didn't even know who you were, much less stop to wonder." There's a common theme in the books that we're seeing for review, and that is lived experience in teenagers. And I think you even acknowledged in your remarks, sir, that sex and sexual contact is lived experience in teenagers. And it's hard to grip on this, because there again, you mentioned that, you know, Dina.
Okay, I'm going to limit. Deborah, I need you to speak, and we need folks in the house to remain quiet, as we did.
You mentioned that you were innocent and you were okay, and I'm very glad for that, sir. Mentioned that Dina was innocent and she was okay, and I'm very glad for that, her. I was innocent, sir, and I was not okay. Not for years. Not until I actually got to college and took anatomy and physiology and maternal fetal development and abnormal psychology and realized I was really, really, really not okay. Took a long time. So there again, the product of these lived experience books is a conversation about those experiences and realizing that they happen to people this age and that they are not okay a lot of times when they happen, like the 15-year-old in the other book that was not old enough to consent, and whether the word was used or not in the book, it was rape, and it opens the conversation to what is okay and what is not okay. Would you watch this movie with your 14-year-old or read it out loud? Sitting on this dais, I don't have the liberty to make decisions based on what I would do with my own child. I have to look at this and say, can I stop the parent who is comfortable having this conversation, reading this with their child, watching those movies? Do I have the authority to tell them, you may not do this with your child? It's a hard question. And I respect your statement that you are not looking for a book banned, but more a warning system. And that was a conversation that I would be happy to participate in, if you and Dr. Oakley decide that that's the route you want to go. But that is the question as it is put in front of us, is for the people who are comfortable for this, and for teenagers like me who are not okay at these ages, is this something we can look at them and say, no? And unfortunately, that is the question as it is posed today. I think you, I think you know that, that right now, we can only look at yes or no. We cannot have a conversation about changing that process.
I apologize, but I have to get back to work. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great day.
Betty? Did you? Oh, I think Diane has one too, but either of you can. I don't know if they're the same or not.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue to have this book retained in the library for these reasons. The book has literary merit and educational value. The book is appropriate for high school students, and the book meets the criteria outlined by Regulation Code 300-R.
I want to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
I understand that we can, you know, I don't think we want.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to add, if we approve this, that we also add that we look at doing a system to identify there is nothing, absolutely nothing, to tell me what depth of.
Can you make the clear motion?
A clear motion is I want to look at an identification system that will let parents and students have some identity of what's in the book. This has explicit sex, or this has topics that may be challenging, or however we want to do it, but that's at least look at it, that's what I would like. And we can approve it at the same time, but put the caveat on top. So all I'm asking is that we look at it.
So are we doing a substitute motion first?
You have to do.
There, next to second. And it might be helpful, if you say, look at it, what specifically, what action you're asking.
A rating system is what I'm looking for.
Who's going to look at it?
Well, we would have to start with the board, I would think, to, or, or to let someone else do it. I don't care, I want the motion that someone, however you all want to say it, looks at a rating system so that when a book has absolutely nothing on it, to identify the level of material in it, there is something that says, there is, this is X-rated, it has X, whatever system you want to make.
Yeah, and so one of my concerns, just for everybody to understand, is that that's going to be really difficult for a board to do, how, to create those standards, just you as the Gopher County Board of Education. My suggestion would be to delegate it, if this is how the board wants to proceed, to the administration to look into whether such rating systems or notices already exist and some independent body makes those decisions. Because having your librarians go through and make those determinations is, I think, pretty complicated and unwieldy.
Well, I'd like to investigate it, then, as if there's an opportunity to somehow give more information to students and parents, because if I, you look.
Is the motion to direct administration to investigate rating systems?
Or somehow, yeah, well, we'll go that way, and then it can be modified. I mean, at least something that would tell parents, this, there is nothing to tell a parent.
I hear that, I'm just trying to get the clear motion, Lynda.
All right, so the clear motion is that I want something, just some investigation of whether there's any way that would make reasonable attempt to identify the content of this book.
So we need a second on the substitute motion.
I'll second.
All right, so, so a vote on the substitute motion. We need to do roll call vote, the voting.
Any way you can tell and vote it.
We're doing a roll call vote, because the machine's not active today, so. Yes.
The concern for motion, it doesn't indicate whether we're retaining the book in the library.
She did, she said retain the book in the library, but direct administration to investigate rating systems and bring recommendations back to the board, presumably. Deborah seconded that motion? Okay, so Deborah, how do you vote?
Yes.
No.
Dina?
No.
A vote, no?
No.
Yes. So that is five to two, six to two, one, two, three, four, five, six to two, it fails. Deborah voted yes, Lynda voted yes.
Four to two, four to two.
Four to two, sorry. The vote counting is always the worst part of this job I'm taking.
I move the original motion, please?
The original motion stands with Betty seconding.
So the original motion stands with Betty seconding. Roll call vote, Debra?
Yes.
Yes.
Dina?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, even though I know I'm not supposed to.
Yes.
Five to one. I got that one right. And then someone will inform the appeal, Mr. Morris, of that outcome.
Move to adjourn.
I just want to say, I think there's a forum for the board to have that discussion, but tacking it on to this, I think it's a complex issue, and that, that's why I voted against the substitute motion. There is a motion to adjourn, is there a second? All those in favor say aye or stand.
Aye.
Thank you.